It is 6:30. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, I would like to approve the Journal of the Meeting, oh, I'm sorry. The Journal of the Meeting of June 30th, 2020 has not yet been finalized. So we will move to bid openings. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters. So we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive and file, please.
So ordered.
Item number two, Third District?
Receive, file, and the deposit agreement and subdivision plat be approved as recommended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Third District?
Receive, file, and the deposit agreement and subdivision plat be approved as recommended. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four.
Um, this pertains to the request of the Director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, um, to, to conduct a, an equity audit within St. Louis County Government. I have been in touch with Ms. Erby, um, to talk about this and what the best way to move forward is. It's an important request and I want to make sure that we are responsive. So I will receive and file and hold it on the order of business. And that will be the order.
Item number five, Fourth District?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second. Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven, Sixth District?
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number eight.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested.
Second. Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine.
Receive and file, same motion for item number 10, and that will be the order.
Item number 11, Third District?
Receive, file, and refer to the Board of Police Commissioners of St. Louis County.
So ordered.
Item number 12, First District?
Receive, file, and refer to the county councilor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, and the Assessors' Office, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number 13, All Districts?
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second, Days?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 14, All Districts?
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, First, Second, Third, Fourth, and Sixth Districts?
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 16, Fifth District?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 17.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 21, and that will be the order.
Item number 22.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 23.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 24, First, Second, Fourth, Sixth, and Seventh Districts?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 25, Second and Sixth Districts?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 26, Fourth District?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 27.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 28.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 29, First District?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 30, Second District?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 31, Seventh District?
Receive, receive, file, and the county councilor be directed, prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 32, Seventh District?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 33, First District?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Pageville.
So ordered.
Item number 34?
Um, receive, file, and hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 35, Second District?
Receive and file. So ordered. There are no add-ons this evening. We will proceed with the report of the county executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. Today, return-to-school guidelines were released to help our superintendents and other school leaders across St. Louis County prepare their plans so they can begin safely opening the schools next month. These guidelines come out as we see a rise in COVID-19 cases throughout most of the country, including in Missouri. In St. Louis County, we are seeing the largest increase in cases among younger people, ages 10 to 30. In general, these two data groups, ages 10 to 19 and 20 to 29, are lower risk with fewer underlying health conditions to exacerbate the COVID-19 virus. But what is troubling is that the children and teens who are getting this virus are living with adults who may not respond as well if they become infected. As parents, we want our children to be active and enjoy the summer as much as possible. But we also know that any interaction with others outside the home closes us, as long as the virus remains a part of our community. With these new guidelines in hand, our schools can make sure that they are doing all they can to keep students and staff safe. Based on these guidelines, our schools will release their plans the week of July 20th, so parents can be prepared for a new school year under these extraordinary circumstances. The guidance document crafted by a working group of superintendents and public health officials provides a list of things schools must do and a list of strongly suggested actions. Schools must establish social distancing protocols for classrooms, cafeterias, gyms, playgrounds, and other places where students gather. Schools must implement a health screening for all students and staff before reporting to school. If a staff member exhibits any symptoms of COVID-19, they must be sent home immediately. Students who have any of the symptoms must be isolated until a parent or guardian can come and take them home. We have a culture of working or going to school when sick, and we need to change that culture during this pandemic. We must strive to keep sick people at home. Schools must encourage frequent hand washing, use of hand sanitizer upon entering a building before eating, after eating, after restroom use, or before any activity, or even before boarding a bus. Schools must not allow groups to congregate around water fountains and limit the number of people in a restroom. Cleaning and disinfecting must be done based on CDC guidance and disposable gloves provided for the work. Masks will be required for staff members when within six feet of anyone else. The schools must encourage students over the age of nine to wear a face mask if there are circumstances to put them in closed areas. On Thursday, the day before the mask mandate went into effect in St. Louis County, our Health Department passed out $150,000 masks. Yesterday, all 20 branches of the St. Louis County Library began to serve as distribution points for masks, and on the first two days, passed out more than 40,000 masks. We want to ensure that everyone has easy access to masks, and we will continue looking at ways to get masked out into the community. We want all of our businesses to remain open, and wearing masks will help us to continue our gradual reopening. We must do all we can to keep the economy going while keeping employees and the public safe. Wearing masks may be an inconvenience, but the trade-off for that inconvenience is protecting the health of others and helping our economy recover. That's all for now. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Page. We will now move to Report of Special Committees. Um, up first is a committee of the whole report. Um, I would like to receive, file, and the report dated June 30th, 2020 be adopted as submitted. Is there a second?
Second, Days.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
I think I heard Councilwoman Days first.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, our second report is from the Public Improvements Committee, held on Wednesday, July 1st, 2020.
The report of the Public Improvements Committee be received, filed, and adopted as submitted, and the Planning Commission's approval of the CUP as requested be affirmed.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Discussion, please.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is the third county council district, so I'd like to say a few words about this. I had asked, uh, the chairwoman of this committee to hold it for one week, uh, to give the residents of Arlington-Glen subdivision an opportunity to be heard during public forum tonight. So obviously, they're going to be heard after, uh, this decision is made. Um, but it nonetheless, um, I can say a few words on their behalf. Uh, Delmar Gardens is asking to build a 115-unit for-profit apartment building for older adults directly in the backyards of single-family residences in the Arlington-Glen subdivision. That's right, a three-story apartment building. Their existing facility of 200 units is only two stories tall. As you know, this development only affects the people of County Council District 3 in unincorporated St. Louis County. In my opinion, the Planning Commission continues to be indifferent to those living in the unincorporated areas of the county, even though many of their members live in municipalities. This development is in far southwest St. Louis County, straddling the Jefferson County line. There are no Planning Commission members living within 15 miles of this development. They have no skin in the game. The people of Arlington-Glen certainly do, and we on this council are their voices. Not in my backyard, NIMBY, we have heard this term often. However, it's important to note that the people of Arlington-Glen subdivision purchased their property and were living in their homes before Delmar Gardens purchased the property behind the subdivision to start their expansion. Many of them paid a premium to have a lot with green space behind them. Keep in mind that Delmar Gardens purchased this property when they could have just as easily purchased property to their east, where it would not have been negatively impacting such a large subdivision. Delmar Gardens readily admits during the, uh, PIC process and the Planning Commission process that the neighborhood will be significantly impacted by their development. However, they feel a need to expand and would like to do it at the expense of their neighbors. Delmar Gardens has other options, but they do, it does not fit into their business plan. There are many other options in the Fenton area for older adults. Most of them are not at capacity. On behalf of the people of this unincorporated area, I respectfully request that you vote no and reject the conditional use permit as requested by Delmar Gardens. The many residents of Arlington-Glen subdivision would appreciate your support. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman?
I'd also like to say, um, speak on behalf of the recommendation from the department that we had an excellent meeting regarding this expansion, and I do want to reiterate this is an expansion of what they are doing. They already have a facility there, and they're looking to expand that. We had presentations from the department as well as the proponents of the project, and we also allowed the opponents to, uh, of the project to, um, access the process by allowing them to make a video presentation to the committee as well. So we did allow them unfettered access, uh, to the project. Um, there was even a suggestion, uh, that the project be moved to Jefferson County, I believe, as the Councilman Fitch mentioned. Well, I live in St. Louis County, and I am interested in assisting residents in St. Louis County. I'm also interested in keeping the tax revenue in St. Louis County. Uh, there are several, um, facilities like this, and they are in residential areas, and some of them are quite wealthy, I might add. McKnight Place, I will say. Delmar Gardens North is in a residential area. There have been no concerns there. Bentwood and Nursing Rehab Facility. So this is not uncommon, uh, for us to have a facility or needs an expansion of a facility.
Councilwoman Days? I can't hear you. I just cut out. I think there is something wrong with your microphone, Councilwoman.
What about now? Can you hear me now?
That works. That works.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm not sure where we stopped off, but, um, even from the application process, the, uh, community came and asked them for some modifications. They, uh, approved those. Uh, they had setbacks that were more than were required. Uh, they asked for the lighting to be changed. That was changed, and they even moved a proposed parking lot and reworked that process. So, uh, I am comfortable that we gave the residents unfettered access, uh, to express their concerns about this project, and I am very comfortable in moving forward with allowing, uh, this conditional use, uh, permit. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Days, are you gonna make a motion?
I already did, and I believe it was second.
Oh, got it. You're right.
Mm-hmm.
Pardon me. All in favor?
It's okay. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Can we do a roll call?
Okay. Councilwoman Days?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilman Fitch?
No.
Councilwoman Gray?
Um, so we're voting on whether to accept this report or not? I just want to be clear.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm the chair.
Okay. That's a little unusual, but okay. I will vote, um, aye.
Ma'am?
Councilwoman?
Can we get a clarification? Um, we are voting to approve the conditional use permit. I want to make sure Councilwoman Gray understands that.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to get a clarification. I thought we were...
You thought we were just voting on the report itself?
Yeah, the motion, Councilwoman, the motion, Councilwoman Gray, is to receive, file, adopt the report as submitted, and then to authorize the county councilor to prepare the appropriate legislation to move forward, um, the expansion, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong word.
Yeah.
It's for the, it's for the report.
That's what I...
And to approve, and to approve the, the conditional use permit as requested. So we're affirming the Planning Commission's...
Oh, okay. I see that now.
Recommendation to approve the cup.
I wish I would have been able to speak with the, um, with someone prior to this. I'll vote aye.
Okay. Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Chairwoman, on... The motion? The motion, there are four ayes and three noes.
Motion carries.
Our third report is also from the Public Improvements Committee. It was held on Wednesday, July 1st, 2020.
Receive, file, adopt the report as submitted, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation to approve the expansion of the boundaries of the Afton Plaza Community Improvement District.
Is there a second?
Second. Tracus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. And now for the Special Committee for Oversight of COVID-19 Funding and Expenditures. Um, Councilwoman Dunaway? Would you like to provide enough?
Yes, thanks so much. Uh, we had our first oversight meeting this morning. Um, it's the first one in a few weeks, and it was long and robust. Uh, we did spend a good bit just getting caught up. Um, St. Louis County has had a total of 6,931 cases of COVID-19, and we have lost 584 St. Louis Countyans. These numbers, as high as they are, are far lower than the projections four months ago. So I give a shout out to, for a great job done by St. Louis County for social distancing, wearing masks, and doing the hard work of following the safety orders. As a reminder, St. Louis County is focusing efforts in the three areas of public health, humanitarian, and economic rescue. In the public health arena, where we dedicated 30% of our CARES budget, we're spending $51 million on testing, PPE, mental health, and contact, contact tracing, where we have 200 volunteers and 57 staff working to round out all exposures to new positive test results. There was quite a bit of dialogue about testing capabilities this morning, and it's apparent that the county testing sites have a much faster turnaround time for test results, and some labs in the private sector are able to deliver at present. In our humanitarian response, where we've devoted 14% of our CARES budget, providing food assistance, senior and homebound services, childcare grants, and homeless services. In economic rescue, we met Rick Stevens, who is leading the team and the working groups focused on small business and industry, community development, nonprofit and alternative lending, workforce development and training, and minority and immigrant-owned small businesses. We then spent a good deal of time talking about the Small Business Relief Program. Checks should start going out the door this week to those businesses that have made it through our Ruben Brown Audit Process. Though there are still outstanding issues, the county CARES team has staff dedicated to working through the issues, so additional small businesses will get the relief we know they need. Grants will continue to be awarded on a rolling basis, even if total applications exceed the $17.5 million that was set aside for the program. And finally, we are requesting additional information and insight into the legalities around the $47 million requested by the municipality. I will be working with the county CARES team, the county, and the county councilor's office to make sense of the legal issues surrounding the request, so this committee can be a part of making the right decision on how these funds can best be used to serve St. Louis Countyans. We meet again at 10:00 AM on Tuesday, July 21st, by WebEx, and hope to have your participation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. All right, we are moving into the public forum portion of our meeting this evening. Um, to remind everyone of the rules of our public forum, um, again, we know that this forum can be a source of pride for all of us and can serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies in our community. So I encourage every person who participates in the public forum to speak with tolerance and respect towards the council, other officials in county government, and to each other. Um, as a reminder, only comments sent to councilcomments@stlewisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour prior to the meeting is set to start, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain the commenter's name. The email must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is the same allotment per person during in-person meetings. The administrative director or a designee will read the comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the journal. And with that, Madam Clerk, you may proceed with the comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we have 59 public comments.
Madam Chair, first public comment is from Shannon L. McCullough, DVM. "It is time to stop using the coronavirus statistics for political purposes. Between October 18th, 2018, and January 26th, 2019, a period of three months, there were 630 deaths from pneumonia and influenza in the state of Missouri. During that timeframe, up to 7 million people in the USA had the flu. During the 2017-2018 flu season, there were 1,309 deaths from the flu in the state of Missouri, with 45 million people infected in the United States with flu during that season. The CDC estimates that between 46,000 and 95,000 Americans died to influenza during the 2017-2018 flu season. We are currently at 1,028 deaths from COVID-19 in the state of Missouri, and 2.99 million people infected in the United States with 132,000 deaths. Compare the numbers. I don't believe for an instance that 132,000 deaths across the USA is accurate. Yes, I believe 132,000 people died with coronavirus, but I do not believe that 132,000 people died because of coronavirus. Why am I bringing all this up? It is time to open up the state of Missouri fully, and it is time to open all the schools fully, including colleges and universities. The restrictions are killing us, literally. How many of us have been directly impacted by family members and friends being laid off? How many of us have been directly impacted with family members and friends, businesses going out of business? How many have been directly impacted with family members and friends committing suicide? What is going to be the, the impact long-term on all of our kids who have missed four months now or form a legation? Don't think for a minute the online education that was done for our students was even 25% as effective as in-person education. My sister-in-law is a primary school teacher, fifth grade, and she was told only 20, she was told to only present 25% of the information that she would normally teach her students during this pandemic. This quote is by Douglas MacArthur and says it all. End quote. "A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions, and the compassion to listen to the needs of others." End quote. Sam Page and the St. Louis County Council, it is time to open our city. Following comment from Ted Gatlin, Jr. "Dr. Page and honorable council, honorable members of the county council, thank you for your governance over the last years, and I am ultimately hopeful for your successful representation of myself and my fellow constituents of St. Louis County. We are in a political season that is truly like no other. There are real consequences for my community if we happen to elect or re-elect representatives that don't work proactively on the issues that we deem necessary. From real economic growth to racial equity, from crime abatement to vacant properties, from educational disparities to food justice, these issues should be foremost in the minds and actions of our representatives. However, unfortunately, in some cases, it seems it is not." seems it is not. The focus has become one of just getting elected and not one of governance. Additionally, that goal of being elected is being coordinated in backrooms with those who have been determined as influential, in parentheses, clergy, nonprofits, civic organizations, in parentheses, but have no real connection to the actual people of the community. This is being done absent of being accountable to actual constituents, and that is wrong. My hope is that, my hope for those that are currently on the ballot for August, I'm looking at you, Councilman Trachis, Councilwoman Dunaway, Councilwoman Gray, and Dr. Page, is that you take an opportunity in a brand-new world created by this pandemic to do politics differently and better. Take a chance to do things the right way and not just the way it's always been done. Talk to the community when they ask and give them a real platform to believe in. Otherwise, you will have to face the fact that the seat you are in is not yours, it belongs to the people, and for you, that seat ain't safe." Comments from Kara Share. "According to the ADA, masks are not required anywhere in America. No business may deny you service because you refuse to wear a mask. Violation is punishable by $75,000 federal fine. Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA 1, requires reasonable accommodation to anyone who cannot wear a mask due to a medical condition. 2, you cannot be forced to disclose any medical condition. SCOTUS recognizes the constitutional right to privacy. 3, your right to privacy of medical history is further protected by the Fifth Amendment. Assert your rights, and includes in here the ADA Information Hotline, 1-800-514-0301, and then 1-800-514-0383, which is the TTY number." Following comments, uh, from Linda Krenning, who lives at 7200 Christopher. "It is hard to believe that our St. Louis County Council does not respect homeowners of Christopher Drive. If they think we have, if we, excuse me, if they think we don't have better things to do with our time and money, they are sadly mistaken. We are tired of writing every week to explain how this decision will affect the rest of our lives. Every day more people are finding out what our council has done and realizing that this could happen in their neighbor, neighborhood too. The question that everyone wants to know is, why is our council working out, working for an out-of-town business when they should be looking out for the residents of Oakville? It's all about the money and that our council cares only for big business and is definitely not working for the people who voted for them and put them in office. If they only would have taken the time to check out the neighborhood to see that this medical treatment center does not belong here or any other residential area. They were blinded by the wealth of this business and never gave a thought to our neighborhood and how this will affect our everyday living. I know there are a lot of problems that are happening now, but our council has failed our neighborhood, and they should make this correction and return this, return this to a family home resident as, as it should always have been. My question is, who made this decision and why can't we get to the bottom of this situation and start from there and make this wrong a right? Every time I walk out my door, I look at numerous trades that can't wait to tear up the front lawn and put up a parking lot in front. Whoever passed this, I hope they realize what they've done to this neighborhood, but the, but the way it looks, I don't believe that they will, that they care one way or the other. I bet my bottom dollar that Sam Page or any other member on our county council would allow or put this situation in their neighborhood because it takes this quiet neighborhood and turns it into a commercial area. Who did this and why can't they find the paperwork on this decision that was made? If they think everyone believes they knew nothing about this decision, and they were looking out for the residents of Oakville, they're sadly mistaken. And this has ended because it, the rest of it exceeds the 400-word limit." Following is from Ron Krenning. "I wanted to tell you about something that happened in our, in our neighborhood the other day. I watched a little boy walk by 7190 Christopher to visit a friend and play outside and enjoy being outside in a safe area with little or no traffic, and it made me realize that if our council doesn't change this decision, this will never happen again. This is a quiet neighborhood, and if a commercial business is allowed in this neighborhood, all of our lives as we know it will never be the same. So you made a mistake and were blinded by the wealth of this business. This freedom won't be possible for any of our neighborhood kids if you allow this to happen. You, you would not allow your children to play outside with all this new increased traffic and commercial trucks of all kinds, and all these strangers that will be coming and going in our neighborhood for the rest of our lives. Why can't you see the fear that we have if this takes place? Oh, I forgot, this is not your neighborhood, or it's not you. Do the right thing and keep our neighborhood residential the way it was designed." Ron Krenning.
From Matt Jaeger. "I am trustee with the Arlington Glen Homeowners Association. I am concerned about the expansion and the increased risk potential for our HOA if this expansion were to go through. Delmar and their developers have indicated that they plan to tie into our retention dam spillway to reroute the flow of excess water because of their plans for a new three-story facility. We have been told by the Delmar developers' engineers repeatedly that we do not need to worry about our retention pond, but what if the dam were to fail? All the water would currently flow into undeveloped areas and eventually into creeks. With the plans being proposed, a future failure of the dam would send water directly into the new facility, creating hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars' worth of damage. The HOA would be responsible, and this would be a liability that we would not be able to absorb. For this and many other reasons, I must ask the committee to reject the proposed expansion of Delmar Gardens at the current site that they are recommending. If this expansion were to be approved, it must be stipulated that the Arlington Glen HOA be indemnified for any damages that may result from the failure of the dam." From Kirk Dykema. "First, the fact that Delmar knew this request would be on the county council agenda for this evening, and we did not, is very disturbing. Any plan Delmar proposes for this particular building spot is problematic due to the proximity to homeowner properties. The buildings cannot be moved further from the homes than they are in the proposed location, and the elevation differences between many homes and the development means that there will always be considerable visual impact to those homes. Early, this impact will be substantial, with home living levels being on par with the second and third stories of the development. Changes made by Delmar following the Planning Commission meeting only nominally address the visual impact of the finished project. None of the changes address the effects of construction, which they estimate as two to two and a half years, during which many homes will be greatly affected, and during which those homes would be largely unsellable. Nor do the changes address the negative impact on home values, both to those homes immediately adjacent and by extension to other homes in the neighborhood due to comparable, comparable sales values. The most impacted homes paid lot premiums to the developer due to their unobstructed nature views, which will be lost should this development proceed. Also, we feel Delmar has approached this project in an uncollaborative fashion and been less than forthcoming about why they insist on building in this spot. They clearly could have anticipated homeowner opposition, but made no proactive attempts to address that. Their approach feels disingenuous, like they hoped to push this through despite or around homeowner opposition, because they think they can or hoped we wouldn't notice until it was too late. It remains very unclear why Delmar is unwilling to build closer to Graboy, away from the homes and neighborhood. There appears to be ample land available, and that area is more suitable than the plan situated very close to the neighborhood. They may need to adjust their plan to fit the topography closer to Graboy and constraints of the pipeline, but that doesn't make it impossible to do. We remain strongly opposed to this development, given its placement and impact on the neighborhood. It should be placed closer to Graboy and further from the neighborhood." From Dan Snyder. "As I write this, I am overlooking our backyard with a peaceful view of the pond and tree line above the common ground behind our home. A large doe and two young deer have just grazed on the trees and disappeared into the woods. My wife and I were blessed to have purchased our dream home on a premium lot at 934 Arlington Glen 23 years ago. When we moved to this home in Fenton, Graboy Bluffs Shopping Center had yet to be built, and we enjoyed going out on the deck or in the yard and being able to look up and actually see stars. When Graboy Bluffs was built, the star viewing went away, as the ambient light from the shopping center made it too bright to see them. We also have enjoyed the peacefulness of our backyard oasis looking, overlooking a beautiful pond and wooded area that attracts a great deal of wildlife. We see deer regularly, as well as kingfishers, herons, cranes, muskrat, beaver, and this past winter, even a bald eagle was seen fishing in the pond and roosting in the trees on the common ground. We enjoy this quiet neighborhood. The upkeep of everyone's property is a pleasure to drive past each morning going to and from work. I can tell you that had any of the buyers of these premium or wooded lots known that a three-story building would someday be their view, none would have bought their dream home here. Delmar Gardens needs to take a closer look at moving the expansion to the property fronting Graboy Road. This will have little to no impact on the property value of the homes in Arlington Glen, and quite honestly, it is the right thing to do. This committee needs to take into consideration all of those St. Louis County residents who have paid higher taxes on our properties in Arlington Glen because of the increased property values of the homes in this subdivision. Would any of the owners of Delmar Gardens welcome such a project in their neighborhood? If they are interested in seeing a three-story building in their backyard, I am happy to put my home up for sale. I'm sure they would not want to pay for the premium lot, though." From Edward and Christina Phillips. "I am an elementary school principal and my husband is a high school teacher. We moved into our new home December 2019. We had finally found our dream home. We made many sacrifices to afford this home, a home in a wonderful school district that we are proud to have our children grow up in. Our main concern with the Delmar expansion is the safety of our children. Our backyard would be backed up to a large parking lot. I would not feel comfortable having my children play outside alone with people in and out of the area. In a typical neighborhood, you would have a house behind you and you would get to know neighbors and build trust. A parking lot leading to a large facility will have visitors and workers that we will have no connection with. In addition to the finished product, my children will not be able to play in the backyard during construction. We will have to endure dust, loud noise, and construction for months or years if this project is approved. This is a safety concern for my family. I beg you to explore other options. The one thing that my children have learned during this pandemic is how to leave video games and play outside again. We have built a fire pit in the backyard, bought an outdoor movie projector, and tons of yard games. It is amazing to see so many kids playing in backyards again. As an educator, I can attest to the importance of outside play and the socially-emotional health of children. Please don't take this away from my family. Thank you for taking the time to read my thoughts." From Christine Beto. "My house is across the street from the retention pond. I'm opposed to the Delmar Gardens expansion for the following reasons. One, this expansion will directly hurt the property values of the houses which border it and thereby have a negative impact on the property values of every house in our subdivision. Our neighborhood already has issues with water drainage and underground springs. Many homes have sump pumps that run 24 hours a day. There is concern that construction changes will have further deleterious impact on water drainage in our neighborhood. Number three, disruptions to the land during construction, namely digging or blasting, can ripple through the surrounding ground and damage the foundations of our residential homes. Number four, the construction noise will be a two-year nuisance. Number five, the continued noise of operating a commercial healthcare facility, traffic, trash, emergency vehicles, will forever blight our peaceful residential community. Number six, the proposed building is a huge eyesore that will dwarf our residential properties. Number seven, Delmar has other options. They could place the building closer to the frontage road and not push it up against our residential community. I respectfully ask your committee to consider our concerns and defend Arlington Glen subdivision from the Delmar Gardens corporate giant who threatens the peace and safety of our little community. I know the investments we've made in our homes is a pittance to Delmar Gardens, but it represents the life savings of us little guys. Please don't let Delmar disregard and destroy our community."
Excuse me. "I live in the Arlington Glen neighborhood and would like to voice my concerns about Delmar Gardens expansion. Not only am I concerned about the noise of the construction, but I am concerned that this expansion will be an eyesore and drop property values for the entire, entire neighborhood. Please do not approve this expansion. Sincerely, Amy Gow." Following comment from Joan Pullman. "As a homeowner in the Arlington Glen subdivision, I am opposed to the proposed Delmar expansion, which is being voted on at this evening's council meeting. The expansion will most certainly result in a negative impact to home values of those homes that will be back to the proposed Delmar complex and will in turn decrease the property values of the entire subdivision. No homeowner would want to see this complex in their backyards. It is my hope that the committee will take this idea back to the drawing board and come up with a solution that is less invasive. Respectfully, Joan Pullman." From Midge Kelly. "I cannot begin to convey my extreme disappointment in the recent, at the recent mask recommendation for St. Louis County and City. The data and the research are, is in proving once again that not only are masks ineffective, but can also be very dangerous to the users, particularly children. I hate to think that our elected officials are part of a larger agenda that does not include the health and welfare of its constituents, but it is appearing to be more obvious daily. Again, I am hoping this is not the case. If the goal is to take dollars from the county and city and divert them to other counties and states, I think this is a very effective decision. I personally will be taking all business needs and shopping expenditures outside of St. Louis County and City. I'm also looking at the possibility of permanently relocating to a county slash state that is supporting the health and welfare of its inhabitants and not governmental agendas. Sincerely, Midge Kelly." From Michelle Snyder. "My husband and I have been blessed to have purchased our dream home on a premium lot at 934 Arlington Glen Drive 23 years ago. We have enjoyed the quiet neighborhood, the association in their policies, the upkeep of everyone's property and the community we have grown to love. We have a premium lot that we paid extra for because it encompasses not only the beauty of the pond, but the wooded area that attracts wildlife that surrounds it. When we heard of the expansion of Delmar Gardens Nursing Home, we were devastated. Why would they allow this expansion to encroach on a residential area and take away all of the beauty that these lots were sold for in the first place? We had paid a premium for peacefulness and beauty, wooded tree lines, a beautiful pond that reflects the sunlight and the moonlight. Now that reflection of the moon will be replaced by the reflection of a three-story building. Would anyone that owns Delmar Gardens pay a premium for such a view? So much for the premium lot. How willing is a future buyer going to be when they have to look at this view? Has Delmar, Delmar Gardens given any consideration to the, to using the acreage that is in front of their facility? There would be little to no effect on our property value or the aesthetic beauty of surrounding our homes. The committee misunderstands our concerns about property values. It isn't the right thing to do at all. Why would your residents want, why would your residents want to be looking into our home windows or the reverse situation? There has to be a better way. Doesn't say much about the hearts behind those running a nursing home if they would choose to do this to many people's property values and lives. This seems very unethical. I pray that they reconsider the placement of this eyesore. Blessings, Michelle Snyder." From Raymond T. and Nancy Fezzi. "The proposed Delmar Gardens construction will exacerbate daily noise construction and we already, that we already experienced from landscaping firm on the outer Graboy Road on the Jefferson County side of the subdivision. The constant beeping, banging, and scraping of graders' backhoes can be heard inside our homes and can be heard loudly already now from the homes directly behind the proposed Delmar expansion site just down the road on the St. Louis side. Our trustees say, and a check from Jefferson County Noise Ordinance has confirmed, there is no recourse to address noise from an established business. I'm sure it's the same with St. Louis County. Think about it. At least two years of construction noise all day, five to six days a week, from the Delmar expansion heard inside your home. During the pandemic, people are working from home and need to focus, not to mention the right to enjoy the safety and refuge a home can provide from the chaos of these times. And when the construction stops, we will hear more ambulance sirens from larger, from a larger Delmar Gardens. I took a stroll recently to the proposed site with my dog through the quiet pastoral meadow. As I drew near the back of Service Drive of Delmar Gardens- As I drew near the back of service drive of Delmar Gardens, I could see and hear the service trucks driving back there, the sight and smell of dumpsters, the laughing, the chatter, the smoking of Delmar Gardens staff on their brakes behind the building, all seen in plain view now from the backyards of several of our subdivision homes. The expansion will pose the same problem for many more homeowners, not to mention bright night lights beaming into bedroom windows. Finally, the expansion's increased traffic would add to the monthly accidents we already have at Highway 30 and Summit's oddly configured six-way intersection, which is near the main entrance to Delmar Gardens. The proposal to add additional entrances along outer Gravois are right at a blind hill, risking further crashes along that stretch with cars racing at 50 to 60 miles per hour. I'm tired of dodging shards of glass and metal at that intersection and seeing vehicles in ditches along outer Gravois. I ask the council to carefully weigh the values of civic progress against the permanent changes this expansion would bring and think about what you value in your home.
Continuing with Joel Austin. My property backs up to the wooded lots that may soon become a three-story building. During my tenure as Arlington Glen subdivision trustee, there was a serious breach in the dam of our subdivision lake. When the dam was breached, the water from the lake spilled out into a vast field and soon all drained into the creek. The proposal is to bury and reroute the creek and attach it to the lake's overflow outlet pipe. The lake and dam were built over 20 years ago and has already breached once. If the dam should fail again after the development, there will be no open field or open creek to drain into. Instead, there will be a brand-new building with elderly residents around to be caught up into the flood. Haven't we learned anything from the Tom Sock disaster? We are obviously concerned about the safety of the residents and staff of the facility, but we are also concerned about our subdivision liability to the damage of property and possible injury or loss of life because our lake's dam is not safe. In recap, the creek flowing from the lake overflow will be buried underground and rerouted into a small six-foot pipe. The building proposed will be within 100 feet of the lake below the dam that our subdivision is liable for. The dam has breached in the past. The dam will certainly breach again in the future. The subdivision will be liable for damage from the breach. Please request that the development be moved to the property that borders Gravois Road away from the lake. From Jeffrey and Jody Atkins. We are writing to advise the council of our strong objection to the Delmar expansion proposal in South St. Louis County near Arlington Glen subdivision. No good can come of this on many levels. In this day and age of beginning to recognize the small person and the minority, this proposed expansion is nothing more than big business and big money trying to push the little person down again. Delmar has no reason to expand in this area, much less on this below-water level land. The creek diversion sets that whole area up for flooding. In addition, the creek diversion will be harmful to the local habitat in many ways. And why aren't the homeowners being allowed to express and voice our concerns to the council in person? This reeks of big-business favoritism. Shame on you. You were appointed or elected to represent all, including the people whose voices need and should be heard. It is time for government to step up to bat for the people, not just big business with their big money. Please vote this proposal down, as you know you should. At the very least, postpone the vote so that every council member can hear from the homeowner side in person. That should be standard protocol. Stand up and fight for the people who make St. Louis great. From Shannon Olson. I'm a homeowner in the area and ask that you deny the requests for expansion regarding From Elizabeth Dykema. Our home looks directly into the site where Delmar is proposing to build. These buildings will dominate our backyard views because our home sits quite a bit higher than the level on which they are planning to build. If Delmar is going to be approved to build on this site, which I don't support, I feel they should do more to address the visual impact their buildings will have on the nearby homes. In the most recent public meeting on this request, we, the neighborhood, were asked whether Delmar could do something to make this acceptable to us. I feel that should be turned around, and Delmar should be asked what they are willing to do to make this acceptable to the neighborhood. Example, there are two things that would improve the current plan and make it less invasive to the neighborhood. First, they could make it a two-story structure instead of three. This would reduce the visible footprint of the buildings. Secondly, they could create berms and plant vegetation and trees of large enough size that the buildings would be screened from the existing homes. The revisions they made following the planning commission meeting last fall take a step in the direction of screening homes with vegetation and trees, but don't specify clearly enough that trees should be tall enough to block views of the building from homes or that vegetation should be dense enough to do the same. I am opposed to this development plan because of how close it is to existing homes like ours. I'd rather it wasn't built. But if it is, Delmar should be told to block the views of their building from the surrounding homes on all sides and from those above on Jefferson Circle to the southwest, so homeowners are not forced to look at their buildings but instead can have views much closer to what they have now. From Tyler McFarland. I am writing to express my strong objection to the Delmar Gardens of Merrimack Valley expansion. Their project is invasive of our subdivision as well as unnecessary. A representative of the EPA should also be consulted to preserve American Eagle habitat on and adjacent to the proposed project development. Continuance without regard to EPA impact would be an egregious error and negligent. I would urge you to consider the needs of the homeowners who have invested much of themselves and their earnings into making their community a pleasant environment in which to live.
Submitted by Diane Unger, interim executive page. How many weeks must we listen to you as you admonish law-abiding county residents? Yesterday's presser put the icing on a very stale cake. Now you seem to be the expert on telling children and teenagers how to behave and how to be responsible. Isn't that the job of their parents? We are all concerned about COVID. Just where was your big concern when you decided that it was okay to release inmates from jails? Keep in mind, those individuals could not follow the law in the first place. I'm wondering, Mr. Page, how many of those released inmates have you personally contacted to ensure that they are, one, wearing their masks, two, staying out of trouble and behaving as you instruct their children to do, and number three, being responsible? Surely you can see the futility of your demands on the residents? When you have pandered to criminals, rioters, and mobs, just what is your underlying agenda? Also, speaking of being responsible, I read where your comments about the Rockwood School District's reopening proved to be incorrect, but not before a great storm was created within the school's community. Who was responsible for that misinformation? It's time for you to place yourself above your politics and show some concern for our police officers and our law-abiding, tax-paying residents. Following comments from Russell Dahmer. In the scientific world, experimentation is necessary to prove or disprove a point. Our nation is experimenting with limiting, neutering, and defunding the police, and the results are already in. 600 murdered in just six cities in six weeks. Cities cutting back on their police funding or limiting police activities are experiencing double-digit increases in murders and other violent crimes. Most of the victims are minorities. The science is clear. Let's not let St. Louis County repeat these terrible experiments. Following from Christina Lyde. I am opposed to the Delmar proposed development for the following reasons. Noise, dirt, and light pollution. A lengthy construction process will create noise and dust to the surrounding homeowners. Then, ongoing deliveries, ambulances, employees, and visitors will cause noise and light pollution 24/7. Loss of privacy. Over 100-plus residents will be looking into homes and backyard to the north. This makes backyards and decks unusable as homeowners know it today. Decreased property value resale value. Homeowners boarding the property and paid a premium for their lot/homes. This proposed facility will drive down the resale values of the homes in the subdivision. No one would pay a comparable price for these homes with a three-story 24/7 business operating in their backyard. Visual impact. Dominated by the new buildings instead of the wide-open green space we have today, a three-story business that operates 24/7 is not compatible with a single-family home subdivision. Loss of park-like setting. In addition to the bordering homeowners, the subdivision will lose usage of the common ground as they know it today because fishing, walking dogs, and enjoying the park-like views from the benches will be lost. There are health and well-being impacts for our son with Down Syndrome and autism. Our backyard is where he exercises for safety reasons and swings to regulate his sensory system. The lengthy construction period will be frightening and overwhelming to him, the visual and auditory impacts making our backyard unusable to him during this period, as well as ongoing with all of the commotion from a 24/7 business operating on the other side of our fence. An amended plan, perhaps, a smaller assisted-living facility has not been explored in this location to fit more within the subdivision. An alternate location has not been thoroughly explored nor explained adequately to homeowners. Delmar has simply indicated they can't. However, something similar to the current plan could fit on land Delmar owns closer to the current facility along Gravois. The existing CUP called for a larger facility to be built in that space, so it's reasonable that a smaller facility could work there. Any issues with the pipeline could be overcome by orienting a building and parking appropriately. There is already parking that drives over the pipeline, so that's clearly permissible if it's not a permanent building. Please reject the CUP until an alternate location is further explored and vetted. Thanks, Christina Lyde. Comes from Walt and Linda DeVelez. We strongly oppose the proposed Delmar Gardens expansion. We are the original owners of Lot 30, Arlington Glen subdivision. We chose and paid a premium for our lot because of the privacy and beautiful views of the pond and trees. Upon completion of the proposed expansion, we will lose the trees to the left of the pond and next to the dam, and our views will be looking at a three-story structure. Our lot is also one of the lowest lots in the subdivision with a storm sewer drain in the corner of our property draining into the pond. We have an in-ground swimming pool, and we are concerned the expansion could cause future issues with the water overflow of the pond backing up the storm sewer and flowing into our pool. I believe Delmar Gardens owns property in Jefferson County to the west of their current facility, with no homes surrounding that property, so it would make sense to build the expansion on that piece of property. Also, regardless of what we are being told by Delmar Gardens, if the expansion happens, there will be a decrease in property value, especially for the homes backing up to the expansion. Arlington Glen subdivision homeowner impact of proximity includes: construction noise, dust and dirt, loss of privacy, decreased property value, significant reduction in marketability or possibility of sale, ongoing light and noise pollution, visual impact dominated by the new buildings. I've attached two photos, one photo of the beautiful view from our deck, and the other photo would be of the Delmar Gardens expansion happens. Thank you for your time, and Arlington Glen homeowners appreciate your consideration for opposition of the Delmar Gardens expansion. Following comment from Natasha Curtis. I work and live in the first district. I would like to speak a bit on the uncomfortable topic of racism. I understand there are many people out there who do not believe systemic racism exists, or they believe it yet just don't care since they're not negatively impacted by it. Given the current circumstances, or shall I say, given the current rational realization of circumstances that have been all along, many businesses and governmental entities are highlighting the existence of diversity or inclusion offices and policies. Speaking as a black woman with a lifelong disability, cerebral palsy, my own belief and experience is in most cases such offices or policies are simply there for appearances to satisfy future audits, et cetera. While the jury is still out as to whether or not the country falls into that category, I have major concerns about the DEI office for the county. Along the lines of statements I've heard councilwoman days, leadership should reflect those it's representing. In the same way, shouldn't an office of diversity be diverse? Unless team members are not included on the county website, there does not appear to be very much diversity in the county's diversity office. I 100% support black representation, but the necessary changes that need to occur to even begin to chip away at systemic racism will not happen in an office in which diversity does not exist. In fact, if it is as it appears now, having a non-diverse diversity office will only contribute to further division and ongoing issues related to racism. On a related note, I understand that in 2020, politics, money, and connections is ingrained in government and leadership. And while some of the council members' participation in politics is blatantly obvious, as I'm watching more and more of your meetings, it has become more and more clear that the DEI office has become either a player or pawn in the game of politics. Again, as a black woman, I love to see minority-owned and women-owned businesses succeed and thrive. African-Americans are not the only minority group, though. Friends, acquaintances, family members of a council member are also not the only people who are minorities. And I hope all seven council members, the county executive, and the DEI office understands that and stops allowing the DEI office to be a part of the game of politics. Thank you, Natasha Curtis.
From Marquis Govan. Two nights ago, I stood with hundreds of folks outside the Florissant Police Department. We were peaceful, and the crowd skewed young. That did not stop officers from coming out of the building in full riot gear, armed with batons, rubber bullets, shooting guns, and mace. I myself was maced as I pulled back a young girl who was repeatedly hit with a riot shield even as she moved back across the street. It is well timed to ban the use of tear, gas, and mace. They are banned in war, and we definitely shouldn't use them on our own people, especially not on nonviolent protesters. The broader picture is that I'm tired of the empty woke tokens being thrown at us by this council and you, Mr. County Executive. Mr. Page, I watched as you declared Black Lives Matter. Although it doesn't seem that way when you continue to allow violence like this against those demanding justice, or when you hire a police chief that says she doesn't believe in systemic racism, or you botched North County response to COVID, which led to the deaths of more black residents. That doesn't even include your failure to abide by your own rules and promises when it comes to diversity and minority contracting. After enabling Steve Stenger for years on the council before you switched up and ascended to your new job, you promised to change. All I see is more of the same. You could start making reforms today. Times like this doesn't require more studies. We need action. We know that our officers disproportionately stop and abuse black county residents and folks of color. That is a matter of public record, information given by all levels of government post 2014. Do your job. You say you're for all county residents. Start with the recommendations of President Obama's task force. You can do this today. Your hands are not tied, but your will to do what is right obviously is. It is beyond me that someone who has failed people like me so much has the audacity to entitle himself to another term. The time to act was yesterday. You all, particularly you, County Executive Page, have failed to meet the crisis, and as a result, folks are being hurt and injured, particularly the most marginalized residents of our country, many of which happen to be black. You own this. From Deb Matush. Just when I thought maybe we were moving in the right direction, we take two steps backward. I have two questions for you. One, if you are wearing a mask, why would you care if I'm not? Your mask works, right? Number two, if masks work, then why are businesses forced to close? And if they don't work, then why are we forced to wear them? These are the conundrums that people are tired of. It's really not about protection, it's about control. It seems you strong arm the compliant and give a pass to the non-compliant. When you gave a pass to rioters and looters, you gave up your right to boss law abiding citizens around. You started with flatten the curve. You built a morgue for extra death. Thanks to the citizens, we flattened the curve and didn't need the morgue. You have misappropriated CARES Act funding since day one and still no transparency on spending. The fiscal irresponsibility of your oversight, Mr. Page, is now your history with St. Louis County. You might be able to give positive lip service to it for a while, but it will catch up with you like it did, Mr. Stenger. As for you, counsel, I keep asking, where are you guys? When I heard the ridiculous mask order, I decided to shop to stock up on Thursday. I spent $697 on supplies and $42.51 on taxes. I will now take that money and shop in St. Clair County, St. Charles County and Jefferson County for whatever I can. My friends and I are having this exact conversation. We don't mind the drive. One way or another, you are killing business. Looks like I'll now be joining you. You keep pushing the compliance citizen and sooner or later, like bad blisters, they pop. From Kathy Whitaker. I would like you to reconsider the mandate you made regarding wearing of masks. I have an issue with wearing a mask due to the fact I have panic attacks. When I put a mask on, I have trouble breathing and the anxiety goes up. I have worn one at the doctor's office and eye doctor's office. When I went in with one, they immediately had me remove the mask because my blood pressure was too high. I live in the county, but I will go to the other areas to do my shopping because they do not require me to wear a mask. My health is also important. I try to stay six feet away when possible. If someone wants to wear a mask, that is their choice. My choice is not to. From Michelle Tyler. As you can see from my address, I live in Jefferson County. However, I work in St. Louis County. Until you drop this ridiculous mandate that people wear masks, I will not be spending any of my money in St. Louis County. I am bringing my lunch every day to work. I purchase gas in Jefferson County. And once I'm at work, I have no need at all to go anywhere that a mask is required. Before this, I would sometimes run errands at lunch and pick up things I needed for my home or my family. That ends now. Target run? We have that in Jefferson County. Need something for dinner? We have stores in Jefferson County, too. I am making sure that I do not patronize or give one cent of my money to your county. And I'm keeping it all in Jefferson County where I have the right to go out into public without a mask. So until you drop this, you won't see any of my money spent in your county. From Shelby and Ivan Nobles. We are residents of Arlington Glen and oppose the Delmar Gardens expansion near our neighborhood. We feel the plan will cause too much environmental damage as it calls for the removal of many trees, the grading of a hill and with the rerouting of a creek. Lack of trees allows a greater amount of greenhouse, greenhouse gases to be released into the atmosphere. One tree can clean toxic emissions from the dirty air exhausted of an average car being driven 4,000 miles and keep our air more breathable by removing the same carbon dioxide and pollutants. Trees keep soil in place, rainwater from running off the land too quickly and help control floods. Increased paved parking areas also lead to increased rainwater runoff as the water is not absorbed into the soil. This increases the risk of flooding, which is already a problem for the greater St. Louis area. Fenton has been particularly impacted in recent years with the area nearly cut off due to major roads and highways being flooded. In addition to contributing to worsening climate conditions, the development of this area will also destroy natural habitat for wildlife and marine life. We also don't feel there is a need for the expansion. In a June 4th, 2020 St. Louis Business Journal article, Delmar Gardens CEO Gabe Grossberg stated, quote, occupancy at Delmar facilities is down 13% and currently running at about 75%. End quote. The article also said, quote, another factor affecting occupancy is the industry's recent building boom. While national occupancy and senior living housing had only grown by a small amount leading up to the pandemic, that was mostly due to an influx of new construction, which was growing by leaps and bounds. In 2012, about 5,000 independent living units were under construction in U.S. primary markets, the NIC reported. That number ballooned to about 20,000 units in late 2019. And Grossberg himself said, quote, the St. Louis market is possibly overbuilt. End quote. In summary, we believe this expansion will negatively impact the environment by destroying green space, removing trees, endangering wild and marine life habitats, increasing flood risk erosion, added emissions from increased traffic, increased garbage and energy usage. We agree with the CEO of Delmar Gardens. The St. Louis market is overbuilt. There is not a need for this expansion. On a personal note, we have two children, one with Down syndrome and one with Down syndrome and autism. Both have sensory processing disorders and that I'm cutting it off at 400 words.
Excuse me, the following comments from Kurt Witzel. Enter, um, excuse me. Was there a council meeting that I missed, excuse me, in which the county council voted to unilaterally change the county charter that after a scandal that involved the county administration in 1954, the people of St. Louis County voted to create the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners and allowed them control, let me emphasize that again, control over the St. Louis County Police Department. Mr. Page, did the county police board chair Ray Price recently resign and did you appoint yourself to chair of the police board? If not, then how can you, the interim county executive, unilaterally decide with no vote of the current police board to solicit a regional corporate organization asking them to fund a total review and study of a police department you have no jurisdiction to oversee or review? Police Board Chairman Ray Price was quoted in the Post Dispatch saying, we run the department. The county does not. What part of that statement do you not understand, Mr. Page? Excuse me. Much like the recent vote by the liberal ladies of the county council squad that gave interim county executive page total control over 180 million of our federal taxpayers' money. This is the second time in the past few months that the interim county, the interim executive has blatantly violated the county charter. The one voted on and approved by voters of St. Louis County at least once every 10 years since originally passed in 1954. What law, resolution, vote by the people gives Paige the authority to continually violate the county charter with no retributions? When his handpicked legal counsel Beth Orwick gets the call from the ninth floor and they tell her whatever Mr. Page does is legal. Is that when she remembers that he picked her for the job? She works for him and he can fire her at any time? Does she even hesitate to review the actual legality of his actions? I thought the administration of felon Steve Stenger was corrupt. He was an amateur compared to the current occupant of the county executive's office. Thank you. Following comments from Debbie Copeland. I'm writing to express my, myself and my family's concern of your mask wearing mandate. You need to be aware of the fact that you are killing the economy of the county and not doing any food for people's health. I think that's supposed to be any good for people's health. The wearing of masks is just setting up for a community of lowered immune systems and illness. What you are stating is not a law. Please correct your misinformation, Debbie Copeland. The following from Anna Crafton. Lately, lately I have come across many Facebook posts touting the work you have done since you took over as St. Louis County Executive from Steve Stenger. Sadly, none of the stories include your outrage at the behind the scenes review, processing and approval by the county planning department and the county councillor's office, which allowed the sale of a residential property to Montenegro. Nothing has been mentioned about the nearly 600 constituents who have signed up petition to stop the 7190 Christopher Drive from becoming a for-profit treatment center. Not a peep about the tax revenue that the Melville School District will lose out on because Montenegro will only have, will, excuse me, will only have to pay the residential rate of 19% instead of the 33 and a third commercial tax rate. Dr. Page, if Montenegro wants to be considered as a single, single family resident, why on earth would they need a 19 car parking lot? Shouldn't any changes they want to make to the property have to go for the, to the board for approval? Shouldn't the residents around this property also be notified and allowed to voice their concerns to any changes? Don't fall for any more of Montenegro's bait and switch tactics. You have the power to stop it now. Thank you, Anna Crafton. Following comments from Terry Deloche. Counsel, just this week, I've heard of several very, I've heard of several very talented men and women who have lost their jobs because of COVID-19. What are you doing to boost our economy? I would like to suggest that you all sit down and read the charter and think about why you were elected. At least of those, at least those of you who were elected. In addition, you are overstepping your jurisdiction when you try to tell school boards what to do. School boards have been elected by the people and are more than capable making decisions for their district. Rarely is a child seriously infected. Children are not as contagious as adults. Yet bureaucrats still want to keep schools closed. Pediatricians plead to open schools in the fall, not only for the psychiatric well being of the children, but also for their social and academic development. Yet the bureaucrats still want to keep schools closed. One of the best ways to control the virus is to let herd immunity develop. Yet the bureaucrat, bureaucrats still want to keep schools closed and wear face masks. Will you please not be a bureaucrat? God bless America, God bless St. Louis County, Terry Deloche. From Dr. Robin Klebko. Hope I said that right. There is no evidence to support that wearing a mask will prevent a healthy person from getting or given, giving COVID-19. On the contrary, there is evidence showing the negative effects of healthy people wearing a mask. As a practitioner, I have found more harm than good with my local patient. Oxygen is essential. I'm getting regular oxygen readings below 95 of my patients. Additionally, I have countless patients in need of help to deal with the anxiety from wearing a mask. This mandate will, to require a mask for all persons over nine when in public is unconstitutional. I ask the mandate be removed and individual, individuals can make their own decisions for their own safety. In health, Dr. Robin Klebko.
From Jake Mueller. I live in the Arlington Glen subdivision. I wanted to submit a statement against the planned Delmar expansion. I believe that the planned building will not only negatively impact property value subdivision, but the increase in traffic around the highway 30 slash Summit Road slash Gravois Road intersection poses a safety risk. I am concerned that a new building of the size being proposed by Delmar will cause a significant increase in traffic at the aforementioned intersection. Currently, there are already issues at this intersection with cars coming to a stop on Summit immediately after turning from highway 30. If such a large addition is allowed to be built at Delmar, the increased number of Delmar employees and visitors will only exacerbate the problem at that intersection. I respectfully request that the council deny approval of the proposed building and suggest a smaller building that will have less impact on the surrounding areas. From Amy Eichman. I'm concerned about the mask mandate. Public policy decisions should not be based on unsettled science or things that are not clearly known. How many times have the experts been wrong about this virus? First, we were told that millions would die if we didn't lock down for two weeks. Don't wear a mask, they all said. It doesn't filter viruses. Then the CDC said, wear a mask. The World Health Organization then said masks are not necessary. We were told surface contamination was a major contributor to transmission of the virus. Then it is not a major contributor to passing the virus. Aerosols are asymptomatic carriers were a huge threat. Then they weren't. Oh, wait, now they are again, I think. We were told the virus will mutate and be resistant to treatment. Except now it may be mutating and weakening. Lancet said hydroxychloroquine is dangerous and won't work. Then Lancet retracted the study. We were told to stay at home well past the initial two weeks and less essential without being told why waiting two weeks or two months would make a difference. Avoid crowds, no church, no large assemblies of people unless you are BLM protesting. Several Democrat politicians in explicitly, in exclusively, in explicitly, I can't say it, violated their own social distancing orders at this point. Was that safe? Now we are told, wear a mask or you are selfish and don't care about others. Oh, and will encourage others to snitch on you if you disobey. This is absurd, seriously. Before you force a bunch of children into masks, you better make sure it's completely safe. Thus far and against, can all cite good sources? Please don't guess on this one. Lastly, I have four questions about COVID-19 specific to our region. One, could one person be counted as a new case more than once in the reported cases data? If so, please explain how such scenarios might occur. Two, are persons who have been quarantined as a result of contact tracing ever counted as new cases without ever actually being tested? Number three, please describe any problems encountered with the tests themselves. I.e. contamination, false positives, the frequency of such problems and how they are tracked and reported. Number four, how are mental health issues related to COVID-19 isolation being tracked? And are we seeing an increase in suicides, depression, et cetera? From Emily Hayes. I'm writing in regards to your mandate for masks in St. Louis County. This is a government overreach on your part. Testing is increasing, positive cases are increasing, the death rate and hospitalization rate is decreasing. There are 24,000 positive cases and 1,000 deaths. Making it a mandate isn't a law, yet protests are allowed to happen. Who is policing their mask wearing? What is happening is people are taking their money and spending it in other counties. You are destroying St. Louis County. No school age child should ever be forced by your mandate to wear masks. No one should. Let it be a responsibility, not a requirement. From Nicole Squirtino. I am very concerned with everything I have read regarding the county's plans to reopen public schools. Many people are speaking out against masks, but it is the most crucial step any of us can take when preventing the spread of COVID-19. Please use science as a guideline for public safety and mandate that masks are required for everyone attending public school in the fall. From Catherine Hincklin Lauderdale. I am writing with respect to the recent guidelines for schools reopening. I would like to urge the council as well as parents, school boards and all school staff to require, require children whenever possible, school staff and all school visitors be required to wear masks at all possible times while in school buildings. Not only will this help to protect our children and the adults who teach and support them, but it will also serve as a lesson to children about the value of community and care for others.
The following from Holly Tinker. It is imperative that masks be required and enforced. Our public health is dependent on it. Masks and social distancing is all we have to, is all we have to limit our exposure to COVID. Those counties in the U.S. that are acquiring masks have reduced the virus numbers comparatively. What citizen has the right to risk others' health? Let us take care of each other. The stats speak for themselves. Thank you. From Kristen Millsark. Thank you for implementing the mandatory mask order. This will help St. Louis County reduce the transmission of COVID-19 and help keep our community healthier. As a teacher and mom, I'm concerned about the guidelines for schools reopening. I hope the districts will be taking stronger measures to keep kids and staff members safe. Thank you. From Chris and Natalie Eaves. As residents of Arlington Glen neighborhood, we want to voice our opposition to the proposed rezoning of residential rezoning of residential property and expansion of the Delmar Gardens facility located at One Arbor Terrace, Fenton, Missouri 63026. We feel strongly that the construction of multi-level buildings and corresponding parking lots directly bordering our neighbors' backyards will severely affect the overall atmosphere of our quiet and park-like neighborhood. Our family loves this neighborhood and it utilizes the common ground. We take walks with our children and enjoy the sights and sounds of the lake and the surrounding wildlife. If the proposed rezoning and expansion is approved, this will dramatically change the current lifestyles of the families in this neighborhood. Disrupting the peaceful environment of our small and quiet neighborhood would surely be unfortunate. Furthermore, the construction of this proposed facility will lower our property values. This will impact each and every resident in a negative way, economically speaking. We, along with our neighbors, pride ourselves on a quiet, well-maintained, and sought-after community in which we currently reside. Families frequently seek out homes for sale in our neighborhood, and we are concerned that this will no longer be the case if this proposition is approved. Finally, we ask you carefully consider these things as you review this case. After all, the residents in this neighborhood and all of District Three deserve your due diligence and care in making this decision. We appreciate your honorable service to this county and for taking the time to read and consider our opinion. From Tim Majors. Dear Public Improvements Committee, I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the expansion of Delmar Gardens of Merrimack Valley Incorporated. I'm asking you to exercise its power of review and deny its conditional use permit to the county council. I'm a direct impact at eight fifty-two Arlington-Glen Drive. For the architect's drawing, my bedroom window is one hundred and fifty-three feet from Delmar's three-story building rising from my beautiful backyard. This property was a premium purchase lot. This is zoned residential, and the expansion is unsuitable for our area. Reasons are home value depreciation, especially with a construction taking two to two and a half years to complete, as of their last meeting. Delmar will be responsible for a massive cutting of trees resulting in a loss of wildlife. This creates noise and dirt pollution from massive excavation. The building design is visually incompatible with existing homes, while construction will impact the environment substantially. There have been issues controlling our hydraulic flow, and we need access to our, and we need to access our dam. Because of limited space, Delmar Gardens' expansion will have to control all water totally underground. This water is from our existing subdivision ponds, a creek that constantly flows, rock hillside that always has water flow. Water will be controlled with a six-foot diameter pipe and is nine hundred feet long. I know this will have to be buried, I know this will have to, will have to buried water-retention areas of equal size. This is a dangerous, massive, confined space running our property lines and is wrong for the middle of a residential subdivision. The building will have a prefab design that does not match surrounding homes. And this is in parentheses, see Delmar O'Fallon, Missouri, in parentheses. All with a three-story view of my bedroom window. Fact check. At the PIC meeting last week, at last Wednesday, the Delmar representative stated that the construction would take eighteen months. When Arlington residents attended the last meeting at Delmar for newly proposed changes to the architect, said construction will take two to two and a half years. Also, when Delmar received their amended CUP PC eighteen oh four in two thousand and seven, the report, Attachment A, analysis has two buildings with one on the outer road and the smaller two-story building to the west. Yes, Delmar Gardens can place their building in front paralleling the outer road, albeit new design and two counties. Please save our subdivision. Thank you, Tim Majors. Following comments from Tom Sullivan. I have several things to mention. Number one, on June second, I asked Council Chairwoman Kalisa Clancy if she could provide answers as to the status of the fifteen point three million the council approved as front money to the two hundred and forty million dollars, or two hundred and forty million dollars the county is to give towards the four hundred and eighty million total cost of the convention center expansion. I'm still waiting on a response. Councilwoman Clancy does a poor job when it comes to constituent service. Number two, it was on July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the county executive Sam Page attended a town hall meeting in North County. One thing everyone wanted to know, when was something going to be done about the old Jamestown Mall? Some said the county could at least keep the, excuse me, some said the county could at least keep the weeds cut. It's nearly a year later, and it seems there's been no progress. Number three, the council had a good discussion today on metro transit issues, but I still believe the council needs to hire an auditor or an accounting officer to look after the huge amounts of funding by the council. Metro operations are complicated and need a lot more oversight. In particular, it's questionable that Metro is meeting the needs of city residents seeking jobs in the county. Number four, last week, there was a city resident on the Charlie Brennan Show on KMOX Radio who told about calling the city police and being on hold for twenty-three minutes. Then some listeners called in, and one said she was on hold calling the police in St. Louis County for four minutes. I think she was talking about the county police, but it wasn't clear. This is something that should concern the council. Taxpayers have given huge sums for emergency communications. Thank you for listening to my comments.
From Heather Brown. Please rescind the mandatory mask order and reopen St. Louis County fully. St. Louis County data, as well as nationwide data, shows that although COVID-19 cases are increasing, deaths have decreased dramatically and continued to stay that way prior to implementation of the mandatory mask order. Your own scientific data is showing this. Science has also shown that wearing masks carry risks such as bacterial and fungal infections, higher likelihood of getting respiratory infections, and pleurisy, among other things. I do not see you, Dr. Page, or your physician advisors providing people informed consent of these risks. Where there is risk, there must always be choice. There are also zero safety studies about mask use on children, and most mask studies do not take into account usage in hot, humid environments under exertion, which is happening right now in St. Louis. Mandating usage and using peer pressure or bullying is knowingly choosing to put St. Louis County's citizens at risk. This makes you personally culpable, if not legally, morally, for any negative effects suffered during this. It is not the government's duty to protect health. It is the responsibility of each citizen to protect his or her health. It is your responsibility as an elected official to protect our rights. There is nothing more sacred than the right to decide what is done with one's body. Remove the mandatory mask order and respect your constituents' rights to make their own choices. From Laura Burkhart. I would like to speak on the county guidelines that were released from the reopening of schools in the fall. Within these guidelines, it is suggested that schools address class sizes, but makes no mandate in regards to limiting capacity. This puts everyone in the building in danger. The guidelines make no mandate in regard to how students will be screened before entering the building and actually suggests that parents screen their own children before sending them to school. We all know that this is an unreliable method, and we absolutely cannot rely on all parents keeping their children home when they are sick. The guidelines do not mandate masks for children. Multiple peer-reviewed studies have proven that masks are one of the most reliable precautions we can take, and to not mandate them is putting everyone in the building at risk. Masks need to be mandated for both students and staff. I want my children back in school for so many reasons, and I support the efforts that have been taken. But with these lackluster guidelines, you are putting our children and teachers at risk. Your job is to keep our community safe. We need more leadership in this process, and I ask that you start making the tough decisions and ask those who are unable, unwilling, to take these precautions to opt for online learning. From Jennifer Bierman. Thank you for listening to medical experts and the scientific community as it relates to mask-wearing and mandating mask-wearing in public. The measures you put into place early in the year during this public health crisis spared many lives. Unfortunately, our efforts were so successful that many people feel that this novel virus is not dangerous. And as a result, we have seen cases soaring in parts of Missouri and elsewhere across the country. And inevitably, we've seen the hospitals starting to see the results of such carelessness. With the start of the school year a little over a month away, my concern lies not just with the health and safety of my children, but the health and safety of their beloved teachers and staff at their schools. I have a child starting kindergarten, and trust me, this is not the situation I ever would have wanted for him, but it is what we are faced with. So masks, he's four, my oldest daughter's seven, we wear them. They are actually surprisingly really good at it. I'm comfortable with them being in masks, but even more comfortable knowing others are wearing them too. You see, I don't know how I can expect to explain to my child that a teacher died from this, or that several did, knowing that it could have been so easily prevented. We ask so much from our educators, women and men who have families that love them, who rely on them. We ask them to do a lot and give them so little, in funding, in respect, in protection. Every single teacher I know would throw themselves in front of their students in an armed intruder event, and now we are asking them to go to school without asking families to do one simple, small thing that can make a huge impact in that teacher's health. Or one small thing to help those families with immunocompromised family members. Please protect our children, protect our educators and school staff. Mandate masks in all schools. From Patty Cantor. The Board of Police Commissioners shall be in charge of the Department of Police. Sam Page, you announced you secured private funding for a study of various aspects of the Department of Police. You secured private funding for a study of a public department. What strings are attached to this private funding? Just when I thought you couldn't get any more liberal, you astound me again. Am I the only one that sees a problem with this? I doubt it. I'm sure Councilman Tim Fitch has a few words of wisdom, considering his history with the department. Did you consult with him? I didn't think so. Just another overreach. The August and November elections cannot come soon enough. Sounds like it's time to secure private funding for a study of the county council. There seems to be more than one problem with the various factions and the behind-the-scenes shenanigans of the council. God help us all. St. Louis County is falling fast. And from Kate Stratton. Sam Page, your mandate to make people wear face masks does not prevent the spread of a virus or protect the wearer of the mask. The only masks that provide the protection from viruses are the ones that are worn in the biosafety level three and four labs, the biosafety suits. I would like to see your real scientific data or randomized controlled trial studies that show face masks prevent the spread and protects the wearer of those masks from viruses. You won't be able to show us because there are not any. Sam Page, your license should be taken away to practice medicine for promoting mandates with no scientific evidence to back them up. Masks are for the ill or for people taking care of them. Habitual mask-wearing depletes one's ability to build up immunity systems against viruses. We need herd immunity to occur. Please do some research. There are many doctors saying this. One local doctor is Dr. Eric Naput. Maybe you should give him a call. With this mandate, you are promoting a false sense of protection and instilling fear in your constituents, and in my mind, you should be personally responsible for whatever outcome, financially and morally liable to the forthcoming litigation you are fostering. What you are doing is wrong and is against the Constitution of the United States. How can we trust what you are saying is true after school superintendents had to send out clarification information to their districts that you gave out false information in your press conference yesterday morning?
The following from Linda Velvo. Dear interim county executive page. Excuse me. How are you spending the COVID-19 funds that have been received from the federal government? I don't recall any briefings on how the money is being spent. Since you are not asking your fellow council members for any input, may I suggest you tell us how you are spending the money? I know this level of transparency isn't your modus operandi, but I do believe the people have a right to know how their money is being spent. We know you have your volunteer committee members advising you on the expenditures. However, you are still the one who must answer for the expenditures. To quote a famous Missourian, "The buck stops here that is at your desk." You are accountable to us, the voting public. So what is your plan, Dr. Page? Following comment from Michelle Brandt. I respectfully request you move the mask order for adults and children in St. Louis County. Making children wear masks is child abuse, and my husband and I will not stand for it. We are tired of St. Louis businesses being destroyed because of your unlawful edicts. Our children are taught to resist peer pressure when it comes to drugs, alcohol, sex, and any number of things, so for you to encourage people bowing to peer pressure goes against what any rational parent, educator, or counselor would advise. We know history, and we will not live in a Nazi Germany's snitched society where non-maskers are rounded up to be bullied, victim of violence, shamed, or otherwise feel like we aren't equal members of society. Masks give a false sense of security and are germ-infested because people rarely, if at all, don't doff them appropriately or change them as often as they should. Germs are spread even more so this way. We cannot, nor should we be expected to live in a bubble. Yes, we can certainly take appropriate precautions, but mask-wearing should be left up to the individual based on their particular health issues and preference. As for our family, we can manage our health just fine without your intrusion on our rights. Thank you, Mrs. Michelle Brandt. From Monica Barrington. As of this morning, the most current total of COVID-19 infections for St. Louis County is less than one percent. That's great news. Less than one percent of the entire population of St. Louis County has COVID-19. The death rate is even lower. Even better news. More testing is being done, so of course, numbers will be up. Increase in cases does not equal hospitalization or death. Medical professionals compare COVID-19 to the common cold or flu. I'm requesting you lift the mask mandate. The numbers don't support such a mandate. A mask mandate takes away individuals' right to choose their own healthcare. It makes you, an elected official, responsible for each person's healthcare, which you are not. We are real people with real lives. We are not a thing or people to be dealt with and controlled. We know ourselves and our families best. We are the only ones equipped to make healthcare decisions for ourselves. With all the conflicting scientific data and medical opinions regarding if masks are effective at slowing the spread of the virus, we, the people, need to be trusted to make the best decision for ourselves. Some will willingly wear a mask while others don't think it's necessary. Both sides need to be respected. Please stop encouraging mask-wears to publicly shame those not wearing one. You are only causing contention, hate, and more fear among the people. We must have the right to decide our own healthcare. Choice is essential. Please lift the mask mandate. From Megan Elizabeth Hagan. I'm writing you today to oppose the St. Louis County and St. Louis City mask mandate. Perhaps in the beginning of this outbreak, a mask mandate would have made sense since we had little knowledge of the virus or its transmission. However, we now know that asymptomatic transmission of the virus is rare, especially from casual contact such as grocery shopping. We originally locked down in order to flatten the curve and not overwhelm hospitals, and that has been accomplished. In fact, many hospitals in our nation are now at the risk of going out of business or furloughing staff. We are now doing more testing than in any other country and therefore have more cases. However, cases is not the number that matters, and I believe the council understands that. Clarification on the people being hospitalized because of COVID or with COVID would be extremely helpful. For instance, if a patient is hospitalized for a procedure and they have asymptomatic COVID and then are counted as a positive COVID case, that is hardly concerning as a huge spike in COVID cases or the real number that matters, a huge spike in deaths, which we have not seen from the reopenings. There is insufficient scientific evidence to support a mask mandate, and it flies in the face of our most important principle of American life, which is personal freedom. I reject this mandate. I reject this mandate, and I ask the council to reconsider. Until the mandate is lifted, I will be taking my business to other counties that are not imposing these draconian measures, and I am not alone. Thank you for your time. Respectfully, Megan Hagan.
From Suzanne Noonreider. I wanted to submit my concerns about last week's meeting. It seems there was an excessive amount of lecturing teens, others, on how to behave during this pandemic. We have heard this for the last four months and are aware of what is required of us. What I didn't hear was any comment on rioting and looting. I still can't figure out why that behavior is acceptable, but I am wearing a mask at the public pool while over six feet away from any other patron. I am also wearing a mask at this very moment in 95-degree heat at my son's baseball game in Baldwin. In fact, our coaches are wearing them right now too, while directly on the baseball field. Players are wearing them in the sunny dugout. I would love to hear your professional opinion about how that is safe. Even the box of masks state they shouldn't be worn for more than four hours. It is also interesting to me that masks are only mandatory in Democrat-controlled St. Louis County and city. Why is that, I wonder? As a resident of St. Louis County, I would like to hear the coronavirus case numbers broken out by age group. Seems only fair that we be told exactly who is suffering the greatest, so we can protect our families. From Amy and Matthew Van Slike. As you can imagine, as the mother of a rising first grader in St. Louis County, I am very anxious about the safety of children attending school this fall. As you consider the guidance you will give for schools in our area, I urge you to please follow the recommendations of the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics. Decisions about safety should be driven by science and not political rhetoric or fear. The only consistent guidance for keeping people safe in indoor enclosed spaces is to ensure that everyone wears a mask to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. From Claire Strakoff. It appears county executive page has overstepped his authority when he announced he had private funding to investigate systemic racism in the police department. The St. Louis County Charter does not give him this authority. This is the job of the Board of Police Commissioners. From Stacy Washington. America is the greatest country on God's green earth. St. Louis County is one of the very best places in America to live. Please know that we will hold you accountable in the fall election for damaging our wonderful way of life with your form of governance. Listen to the letters we are sending you. They are full of wisdom and guidance. And our final comment this evening is from Robert E. Elder, DC. I am writing in opposition of the St. Louis County mask mandate for several reasons. It is a restriction of personal rights protected under the Constitution of the United States. Masks are unproven when it comes to the reduction of COVID spread. Masks increase CO2 levels and decrease PO2 levels to sometimes dangerous levels in healthy individuals. In no other time in U.S. history have the healthy been quarantined or been mandated to wear masks, socially distanced, et cetera. The rules are arbitrary county to county. I can go to St. Charles and not wear a mask, but in St. Louis County, I am required, based on what scientific evidence. Other countries have not socially distanced or even mandated to wear masks, and their infection numbers are no worse than here in the United States. The infection death rates, the infection death rates do not reflect COVID being an unusual threat to the healthy population. I respectfully ask that you all reconsider this mandate and reverse the decision. And almost every patient, friend, and family member I know feel the same. Madam Chair, that is all the public comments for this evening.
Madam Chair, I may, I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of introduction of a substitute bill for substitute bill number one for bill number 123, which is on the final passage order of business. Is there a second?
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
Uh, no, and I hope Councilman Fitch gets a chance to talk about this.
Madam Chair, on the motion to suspend the rules to uh, submit substitute bill number two for bill number 123, there are four ayes and three noes.
All right, there are four votes, so the, uh, four votes in favor, so the motion carries. Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number two for bill number 123, introduced by councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance requiring the filing of financial interest statements by personnel appointed by the county executive to provide assistance and advice regarding management of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act grant. Grant received by St. Louis County, provided such personnel have authority to make final decisions regarding expenditure of such grant funds, be it or... Oh, that's it. Excuse me. Such grant funds.
Uh, before I move for the adoption, I, I have a statement to make. You know, when this bill was first introduced, at first glance, I could see why, why, why it might be a good idea. But after spending more time thinking about this, talking about it with my colleagues, and with the volunteers who are the ones who would be impacted by this, it has become increasingly clear to me that the unintended consequence is to punish volunteers who are giving St. Louis County their time and expertise in a moment of crisis, when we cannot afford to lose either. We simply do not have the internal bandwidth to spend the time and energy with the leaders and stakeholders in our community to assess the needs and the organization's best position to deliver the magnitude of services our people need without the input of our diverse, talented, and dedicated team of volunteers who are really making recommendations. For this reason, I would, I would like to ensure that the only volunteers, only those volunteers with financial decision-making authority are required to file a public financial disclosure. With that, I move for the adoption of substitute bill number two for bill number 123.
Second, Daze.
Discussion, please.
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Well, I was the sponsor of the original bill 123, and then I changed it to a subbill number one, uh, per the request of the chairwoman. This county council authorized the interim county executive to spend $173.5 million, your tax dollars, without having to seek council approval. As you know, this was very controversial. Instead, a group of well-qualified, well-meaning volunteers were appointed by the interim county executive to advise him on how to spend these millions of tax dollars. These volunteers have been given a greater responsibility for distribution and spending of these funds than those of the elected members of this council. They have developed a budget and have started to decide how and where the money will be spent. Like I said, this bill, my original subbill one, was a good governance bill, a transparency bill. Transparency, that's a word we've heard much in county government over the past year and a half. Subbill number one to bill number 123 requires these volunteers to submit some financial interest forms, statement forms, and they would be available for public inspection. It's the least we can do to protect and educate taxpayers, so they know who is making decisions on the expenditure of their hard-earned money. True, the volunteers won't be writing checks, but they are certainly able to influence how your tax money is being spent. Remember, my bill only applies to CARES Act funds for the COVID-19 pandemic. This county has never allowed volunteers to have this much influence control over so many millions of tax dollars, and therefore, we really need to take up subbill one for bill 123 so it can become law. Ethical volunteers will welcome this public scrutiny of their financial interests and how these tax dollars are being spent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further comments before we take a vote?
Madam Chair.
Did I hear Councilman Tracus?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just, uh, support Councilman Fitch's suggestion that, uh, subbill one, his subbill one, be taken up and voted on as well as subbill two. Uh, unless there's something in the rules that would prevent us doing so, I think it's important that, uh, the council has an opportunity to vote on that, that measure. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
So, go ahead, Councilman Harder.
Thank you. Um, I too support, uh, Councilman Fitch's effort here. Uh, I think good ethical people would welcome the scrutiny. We have to sign, uh, our, uh, ethical statements when we are elected, uh, and we have to renew that every year. I think, uh, these are unelected people, unelected volunteers, and we appreciate their, their help in this project. Uh, but I think the public needs to know, uh, a lot of background information about these so-called volunteers, and this document, uh, if required by law, will allow that and would be public information through most likely the, uh, MEC. So, uh, I totally support this, and I hope the people of St. Louis County see our logic in this, in this case and, uh, support it as well. Thank you.
Um, to respond to Councilman Tracus's, uh, question about being allowed to take up the subbill, um, are, as you are aware, Councilman Tracus, section 2.100 of the county charter says that an ordinance which has been introduced may be amended after introduction and prior to its final passage, um, but any amendment must be germane to the original purpose of the ordinance. Um, if, if subbill two for bill 123 gets voted down, we might have an opportunity to still vote on substitute bill number one, but at this point, um, we have adopted substitute bill number two for subbill one for bill 123. So that is what the motion is, um, that has been seconded. So with that, I will go ahead and, um, move for a vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Member Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder, I'm, excuse me, Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on the motion to adopt substitute bill number two for bill number 123, there are four ayes and three noes.
Substitute bill number two for bill 123 is adopted and will move to the final passage order of business next week. Um, with that, we will proceed with introduction of bills.
Madam Chair, I just, this was on final passage? This matter is on final passage, so I believe that it will be, excuse me.
No. Need unanimous.
Excuse me, never mind.
Gives you another week to pander.
Excuse me, Councilman Fitch? That was out of order. Please proceed with introduction of those.
Sorry, I thought I was on mute.
Yeah. Bill number 150, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $94,992 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety for support of a forensic scientist and crime laboratory equipment for the police department, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 151, introduced by councilmember Fitch. An ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in St. Louis County on the third day of November 2020 for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of St. Louis County a proposition to amend the St. Louis County Charter to provide that in the event of a pandemic, no state of emergency declared by the county executive pertaining thereto shall extend for a duration beyond the 15th day following the effective date of such declaration unless the county council by a two-thirds majority vote adopts a resolution approving extension of such order and setting forth the duration that the state of emergency shall remain effective. Bill number 152, introduced by councilmember Fitch, excuse me. An ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in St. Louis County on the third day of November 2020 for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of St. Louis County a proposition to amend the St. Louis County Charter to provide that in the event of, of a pandemic, no public health order issued by the director of the Department of Public Health pertaining thereto shall extend for a duration beyond the 15th day following the effective date of such order unless the county council by a two-thirds majority vote adopts a resolution approving extension of such order and setting forth the duration that the state of emergency or order shall remain effective. Madam Chair, those are the bills.
Thank you. Please proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by councilmember Harder.
Please hold bill number two.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number five, introduced by councilmembers Fitch, Tracus, and Harder.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number five is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold bill number 32, please.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 36, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 36 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold bill number 76. Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 109, introduced by councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute bill.
Substitute bill number one for bill number 109, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Trinity Services Group, Inc. for operation of food services and vocational programs at the Buzz Westfield Justice Center.
Um, there has been quite a bit of discussion about this, this contract. Um, the substitute bill limits the contract to one year, um, which is different than the original bill, which was a one-year contract with the option to renew without needing to come back to the council for support. So this, um, will ensure that we have some input, um, within the next year about what the future of, of these services looks like at the justice center. Um, I move for adoption of substitute bill number one for bill number 109. Is there a second?
Second.
Dunaway.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries bill, substitute bill number one for bill number 109 is adopted. I move to perfect substitute bill number one for bill number 109. Is there a second?
Second. Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries substitute bill number one for bill number 109 is perfected.
Bill number 148, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 148.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries bill number 148 is perfected.
Bill number 149, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 149, please.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the bill number 149 is perfected. Moving on to passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute bill number two for bill number three eighty five, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold substitute bill number two for bill number three.
Substitute bill number two for bill number three eighty five is held.
Bill number fourteen, introduced by Councilmembers Trakas, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold bill number fourteen, please.
Bill number fourteen is held.
Substitute, excuse me.
You've done it.
Bill number one forty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill one forty. Second, Fitch.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill one forty, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one forty is finally passed.
Bill number one forty one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number one forty one.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number one forty one, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one forty one is finally passed.
Bill number one forty two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number one forty two.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number one forty two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one forty two is finally passed.
Bill number one forty three, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number one forty three.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number one forty three, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one forty three is finally passed.
Bill number one forty four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final.
I'm sorry.
I move for final passage of bill number one forty four.
I'm tired, I'm sorry. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye. Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number one forty four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one forty four is finally passed.
Number one forty five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number one forty five.
Second. Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number one forty five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number one forty five is finally passed.
Bill number one forty six, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
This is our fiscal year twenty twenty one appropriation for the ByState Development Agency. It has been on our agenda for a couple of weeks. We had a good hearing today with leadership from ByState. I move for final passage of bill number one forty six.
Second, Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number one forty six, there are six ayes and one no.
Bill number one forty six is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have one resolution this evening. Resolution introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray, Days, Dunaway, and Clancy.
Let's see, please read the last two whereas clauses in section one.
Yes, ma'am. Whereas since its inception, the St. Louis County chapter of ESOP has engaged in continuous efforts to increase diversity in law enforcement through police training and recruitment initiatives in order to effect change within the police department. And whereas for years, citizens across the nation have been yearning for police reform, transparency, and accountability. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council expresses its support for the ethical society of police and the principles of police reform, transparency, and accountability upon which it was founded.
I move for the adoption of resolution number one.
Second, Days.
Discussion, please.
Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. This M O U, we have no authority to sign this M O U. The interim county executive had no authority to sign the M O U. The police board signed it last week. They have the authority to do that. I support the authority of the police board to do what they did last week. But for our vote, since we have no authority, I'll be abstaining when it comes time to vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Trakas.
Thank you. To the extent that this resolution would authorize or at least support the premise that ESOP should be allowed to represent rank and file members of the police department in in contract negotiations, I don't believe is permissible because the rank and file has already selected its representative. So for that reason, as well as the reasons articulated by Councilman Fitch, I will be abstaining as well. Thank you.
The resolution does not M O U and also does not mention for the reason you just stated, it does not mention representation.
No, but I believe the M O U does, if I'm not mistaken.
But I think the point that Councilwoman Gray is making is that this resolution is not about the M O U. It is about recognizing and affirming the goals of ethical society of police.
And I carefully worked with the counselor to make sure that we did not conflict with the C O B.
So maybe we can hear from the county.
And I'm not asking, you know, you to change a vote. I'm just wanting to be clear for the the people listening.
So maybe we can hear from the county council. Is that accurate, that synopsis is what we're?
Madam Chair, would you like me to answer that?
Yes, you may speak, Ms. Ormick.
Yeah, Councilman Trakas, yes. Councilwoman Gray is correct. That is what we took into account when reviewing this for legal sufficiency to make sure that that would not run afoul of the collective bargaining agreement with the.
Very well, thank you. In that case, I'll vote aye.
All right, we will go ahead and take the vote then. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Abstain.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are six ayes and one abstention.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number one.
Please hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, Madam Chair, we have two prepared orders this evening. Order number one, in the matter of donations of various items, cash, and gift cards in support of the Animal Care and Control Division of the Department of Public Health.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Order number one is adopted.
Order number two, in the matter of donation of a horse.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
Second, Days. Sorry.
We need to laugh sometimes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Councilman Harder, did I? Did you?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
I just, I just want to know who is going to ride this horse on a weekly basis? Do we all have a chance? We share, what?
I think that should be left to you.
Go down to the park, they'll let you ride it. I hope. I hope Madam Chair has a big backyard.
I wonder what my son would think of that. I don't think he wants to share the backyard. Neither do the dogs. All right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries order number two is adopted.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm so sorry to do this, but I would like to move to suspend the rules for the purpose of returning to the final passage order to take up a motion for final passage of substitute bill two for bill number one twenty three.
Do we not need unanimous support on that?
What happened?
I would like to ask the county counselor to step in and advise.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, before if by rule nine, that's the rule that requires seven. If you suspend the rules to move back to that order of the agenda and then also suspend the rules on a subsequent vote to suspend rule nine, then you would need four.
Okay, so the motion is to suspend the rules to take up substitute bill number two for bill number one twenty three on the final passage order of business. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I don't know what happened.
Councilman Fitch.
Just so the public knows, what what you're looking at passing now, the substitute bill number two, absolutely no one involved involved in this COVID nineteen spending will be subject to filing this financial statement. Nobody. It says for making final decisions. Well, we've already given the interim county executive the final decision-making authority. There's no one else. So this bill does absolutely nothing if it passes. Prove me wrong.
All right, let's take a vote. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
No.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakas?
No.
Councilmember Harder?
No.
Chair, on the stated motion, there are four ayes and three noes.
So substitute bill number two for bill number one twenty three is finally passed.
Well, I think we need to ask.
Was that the?
I think, I think we need to ask Diane to read substitute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Back on the agenda.
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
So that, go ahead.
Substitute bill number two for bill number one twenty three, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of substitute bill two for bill number one twenty three.
I second that motion.
Discussion? In discussion.
Councilman Fitch.
I thought we had discussion earlier.
Not on this motion, we haven't.
I know that.
All I could say is I understand that you all are trying to take care of the interim county executive by basically letting him off the hook and all of his volunteers off the hook to file these. I see exactly what's happening and I see the public sees that as well. So that's all I have to say.
Comment, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Dunaway.
As I said earlier, we would never be able to get through this without the volunteers that we have. And asking them, in addition to volunteering their time, their expertise, and everything else that they have brought to the table, the amount of energy that they are spending, spending time in our community with leaders in order to get us where we need to go, is not something that we can take for granted. And I think asking them to put their financial situation on view for the public is is out of line. And further, I also believe that this will freeze out other volunteers from getting involved in the event of future crises if they see what will happen to them. And for that reason, I think it's really important that we protect our volunteers and the work that they're doing to help us get through this crisis as expediently as possible. And to argue that there is no transparency or oversight is to ignore the reality that we have a portal at STLcorona dot com that lists every single thing that's happening. We have an oversight committee every other week where we go through what's happening. There is oversight. There is transparency. We are protecting our volunteers that are helping St. Louis County get through this crisis.
I like to say something that I've been not saying this for the past.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gray.
I think it's unfair and disrespectful to not allow our colleagues to vote the way they see fit for their district without continually being badgered and things being said such as pandering. We have different views on different subjects. We have different districts, and we represent our districts to the best of our ability. And we shouldn't continually be ridiculed when we have different opinions and we want to vote a certain way. We've discussed, the council member discussed this three times today, but not for facts, not to bring out the facts, but to to badger us. And it's happened several times before and I haven't seen anything. But today, three times on the same subject is a bit much. Give us the respect to vote, to have our own votes. Everybody votes the way they feel is best. And I don't think it's right that you continually say that we're doing something for for altruistic reasons when that's not true.
Well, the public will get to decide that.
Right, so you don't have to keep, well, okay, right.
Councilman Fitch, did you, did you speak with any of the volunteers about this bill and the impact to them? Did you have any direct conversations with them about it?
I did not, and none of them reached out to me to ask me about it either, since it would impact them.
Okay.
All I did hear was from many people, many of these individuals are like, I'm not about to disclose my financial transactions. I'm not going to do that. So all I would say is, if those people feel that way, what do they have to hide?
I mean, I think we would be talking, I think we'd be having a different conversation if this was part of the. I mean, I think we would be talking, I think we'd be having a different conversation if this was part of the expectation upfront when they, when they joined as a volunteer, but to voice this upon them, uh, months into their engagement with us, I think is unfair and is, um, could have, could have some really big, um, consequences. And perhaps that is your intention, but it is not mine. Um, as Councilwoman Dunaway said, we need these volunteers because they have helped to provide a really strong response to this continuing pandemic that is not going away, that is getting worse. Um, and I would like to keep them in place, um, to continue providing their expertise, um, which has been really important, I think, to our strong response here in St. Louis County.
And then I'd say the best solution to this would have been to vote down Sub Bill One to One-Twenty-three and not create a Sub Bill Two that does absolutely nothing.
Well, Sub Bill Two could do something. It could do something. Um, we don't know, there might be some more volunteers that are brought in. Um, we also know that Sub Bill Two brings us, um, passage of substitute Bill Number Two will bring, um, will, will push for some alignment within current state and county ordinance as well when it comes to certain financial disclosures for volunteers.
Do you see any volunteers, do you ma- do you see volunteers making final decisions, as the wording says in this bill, on final financial decisions that you have in Sub Bill Two? Do you see that happening in any future volunteers?
I don't know, Councilman Fitch. I don't know. I, there's a lot of things that I don't know that I never could have expected or forecasted in the past couple of months. We are in uncharted territory right now and we need to remain nimble.
And I think that the purpose, uh, would be for someone who's making those type of decisions. So if, if it's, if it's not going to happen in the future, it, then it's not going to happen, but we don't know that. But what other reason would we need to pursue the matter if we, if we don't, um, think that it could be possible? I don't ma- my point is, why were, were we going to have the bill in the first place?
I think that speaks for itself, the bill does.
Well, I think we've had a thorough discussion on this. It's been on our agenda for a while and we had a chance to engage in some continued dialogue tonight. So I think it's time to take a vote now. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze. Aye. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number One-Twenty-three, there are four ayes and three noes.
Substitute Bill Number Two for Bill Number One-Twenty-three is finally passed. That brings us back to the end of our agenda this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.